What's happening? I'm all set, thank you very much. Can I have your attention, please? We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening, welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, October 6, 2025. The first matter of your business, it would be for the approval of, we have, actually, we have the September 18th listed here, but we also have the September 4th as well. So I know we received comments on both. Anybody have any questions on the comments for September 4th? Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the September 4th minutes as submitted.
I'll second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposition? Hearing none, those minutes are accepted. Now we'll move on to minutes for September 18th, 2025. Any board members have any corrections? Let's see, I think. I had one small correction. It was on, I believe, oh, okay. On, it was, on Mammoth Plaza. On the motions, I believe, Mr. Fichette made the motion to amend the following conditions on the roadway, and it was seconded by myself. And then I made the motion for the special permit, okay, oh, I'm sorry, with the same conditions, right. And, I'm sorry, I stand corrected, that's correct, okay. Besides that, I would have none. No. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Any opposition hearing none, those matters are approved. Thank you. We do have one request for a continuance tonight, so I'll just take that out of order. Anybody here this evening for 88 Weed Street? For Weed Street, we received their letter from the applicant's attorney, Attorney John Cox, requesting a continuance. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to the application by Mellow Holding LLC to split the existing lot and construct a single-family home at the above address. The subject property is located in traditional, single-family zoning district. The proposal requires special permit approval under section 5.1.17 of the Lowell zoning code to reduce the required frontage. And the letter from Attorney Cox indicated that the applicant had met with neighbors, they had some talks, and they were going to further continue to try to satisfy some more of the neighbors, ask if they could have a little bit more time and be able to comment on matters that were brought up by the, by planning staff. So they're requesting a continuance to November 3rd. And the board members have any questions for the continuance? If not, I'll make a motion to continue until November 3rd.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made in second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, that matter is continued. Thank you. Okay, moving along, we're going back to continued business. We have a site plan review, 70 Wobba Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Boston Bud Runners LLC to operate a marijuana delivery business at the above address. The property is located in the light industrial zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval from the planning board per section 7.10.5 of the Lowell zoning ordinance. This matter was just before us at our last meeting, after we received a presentation from the applicant. We had opened it up to the public, and there was nobody who spoke in favor, nobody spoke against. The board, the board opened up now some discussion. One of the questions was, we talked about maybe a possibility of an odor plan, since we've been pretty high on those in the past, excuse the pun. And then we talked about whether it had any relevance in the area, any part of a school zone. The applicant's attorney said that they'll get that information to us very quickly. We received that a couple of days after the last meeting, and I think that brings us up to date, and I'll turn it over to the applicant at this time.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the board. I'm Catherine Welk of Foster Walker in DeMarco, 350 Main Street, Malden, Massachusetts. So yes, I'm here representing applicant Boston Bud Runners. We were here before you on September 18th. We had a great discussion, and then I submitted the missing context map to you on September 22nd. So I'm here just to answer any questions that you have, or anything you would like to discuss further with me.
Thank you very much. Anybody here this evening have any questions or want to speak in regards to this project? Anyone want to speak? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to the board members. Any board members have any questions? As indicated, we did receive the map. I know we all had a chance to look it over. I spoke with planning staff about it. Planning staff said it looks like it's very conforming, there was no issues with it. Caleb, you have any questions? Do you mind I ask you first?
I just wanted to clarify, there is no, any other cannabis-related business that you have identified?
No, not according to the map data.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And I don't see any schools or related, so I don't have any problem with it. Thank you.
Lucia, any questions or comments? No?
Mr. Fichette?
Mr. Chairman, I'm all set, thank you.
I'm all set.
Trevorson? Okay. I don't have any concerns either, once we received the map laid out, basically, was what we really wanted. And the question was, you know, how we usually try to put some odor plan in place, even though the applicant basically stated there shouldn't be any, so they're pretty confident about that. So, so what's the request for the site plan?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the condition that the applicant, if there were to be any odor issues from the operations, from the cannabis operations on that site, that they would cooperatively work with the city to mitigate any odors as reasonably possible.
Second.
Motion's made in second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. The vote carries, five in favor, none against. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Good luck.
Okay. Moving along, the next matter will be a special permit on 93 Mammoth Road. Special permit, 93 Mammoth Road. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Scaff Realty LLC to convert the former by-house building to a three-unit residential building at the above address. The subject property is located in the neighborhood business zoning district. The proposed use requires special permit approval from the planning board per article 12.1 of the Lowell zoning code. Ordinance, excuse me. May we hear from the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Scaff Realty. With us tonight, we have George Scaff. George is the principal of the LLC. We also have Matt Hammer from Landplex. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight seeking a special permit pursuant to sections 11.3 and 12.1C of the city zoning ordinance. Mr. Scaff is intending to repurpose this property into three residential dwelling units. The property is located within the neighborhood business district, and the property consists of approximately 5,346 square feet of land. And as the chairman mentioned, this is the former site of the Mammoth Road Fire Station, which was taken out of service several years ago and has deteriorated in terms of the condition of the building. Mr. Scaff is here tonight as a result of being the successful bidder, I suppose, with regard to the city's request for a proposal to purchase this property. So Mr. Scaff entered into an agreement with the City of Lowell back on July 1st to purchase this property. That purchase and sale agreement is contingent upon Mr. Scaff receiving all municipal approvals in order to redevelop this property. I should note that there was a previous, you know, there was a first go-around with the request for proposals for this property. There was a different developer chosen for that first response, and for whatever reason, that proposal did not move forward. The property was put back out to bid again. Mr. Scaff was the only bidder, and he was, his bid was deemed highly advantageous to the city. I provided you with a copy of that city council vote authorizing the sale of this property to Mr. Scaff with the application materials. But as I mentioned, the property, the proposal is to repurpose the property into three residential dwelling units. So the layout of the units is as follows. The first unit will be on the second and third floor. That unit will consist of three bedrooms, one bath, and contain about 2,400 square feet of living space. That unit will have a designated parking space within the garage and a designated parking space immediately outside of that garage bay. Unit two is also on the second and third floor. That unit will have about 3,000 square feet of living space, three bedrooms, two baths. It will also have the other garage bay designated as parking and the parking space immediately outside of that garage bay. The third unit is entirely on the first floor. That unit will consist of two bedrooms, one bath, and about 1,200 square feet of living space. That unit will have two parking spaces assigned in tandem fashion to the far south side of the lot, as shown on the, on the site plan. Staff comments do a pretty good job of demonstrating how this proposal meets the relevant criteria for issuance of the special permits. I'll use that as our roadmap to work through this application. Comment number one simply expresses that because we're proposing three dwelling units on one lot in the neighborhood business district, we have to come before this board and seek the special permit, which is what we are doing. Comment number two reviews the relevant criteria for the special permit. So in terms of the application of this proposal to the Lowell Forward Plan, this proposal meets one of the critical criteria, which is to, to establish or create additional housing units within the city. We understand that we're only creating three units, but every unit counts when we find ourselves in the housing crisis that we're in. Another, the proposal also achieves another goal of the Lowell Forward Plan, which is to increase in growth within a neighborhood activity center. So this stretch of Mammoth Road has a lot of businesses associated with it. We are, as you know, repurposing this to residential, so it will soften that, that field to some degree. It also suggests that the residents living in these units will help support the businesses in the, in the community as well. In terms of neighborhood character, the staff notes in the comments that the proposal fits neatly into the neighborhood character, considering that most of the residential properties along this stretch of Mammoth Road are multifamily properties, so the density is consistent with what is in the neighborhood. It complements the character. The rehab of this building will also consist of the repointing of the brick, replacement of windows and doors, painting the trim, replacing the pavement, creating a pervious walkway, and landscaping, all of which will complement and actually enhance the character of the neighborhood when the project is complete. Staff directs us to the city's transportation engineer's comments to discuss or review the traffic, access, and safety. So the transportation engineer points out that egress and ingress from this property is backing out, you know, pulling in and backing out onto Mammoth Road, which is not ideal, but it really unfortunately is the only option we have here, and is very, very consistent with all, what all the other businesses along this stretch of Mammoth Road do. In terms of access for first responders, there's plenty of access along Mammoth Road for first responders to, to get to the site, whether fire, police, you know, ambulance. And I'd suggest any traffic associated with the redevelopment of this property as proposed is negligible. The next set of comments relate to the zoning board of appeals application. So I'll just, you know, with regard to the zoning board, we were before the zoning board on September 8th. We were seeking relief pursuant to 5.1, dimensional relief pursuant to 5.1. At that meeting, we, we received unanimous, unanimous approval for the relief that we were seeking. That approval had two conditions associated with it. One condition was that we determined whether or not we can install a shade tree in the front of the property. And the second condition was that we comply with the engineering department comments that were in the, in the notes that you have. We had no, no issue with either of those comments. We agreed to them, and as I said, we received unanimous approval. I'd also point out that we are not seeking any relief pursuant to 6.1 off-street parking. We, as I mentioned, we have provided two parking spaces per dwelling unit, so that no relief is needed there. The planning and project management, management team comments point out that the additional housing helps the city gets to, get to its housing production goals pursuant to the Lowell Forward Plan. They also point out that the Father Maguire Park is directly across the street and, which is great for any residents that look to take advantage of that green space that's, that's right there for them. The economic development team notes or confirms that it is, it was the intent of the city to sell this property to be repurposed for residential purposes, and that they, they go on to say that the finished product will be a major improvement to what currently exists on the site. As I said, we've looked at the engineering comments, we've looked at the stormwater team, water department comments. We don't have any concerns meeting any of those comments noted there. And the last thing I'd point out before I turn the presentation over to Matt is, you know, repurposing these old municipal buildings is not, not an easy task for a developer. There's often surprises there. Mr. Scaff fortunately completed a very similar project with the Fourth Street Fire Station in the Centerville neighborhood. I believe we provided you with a copy of that building. Matt just handed those out before the meeting started. So we have the right man, the right developer for the project. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Matt, so he can review the plans with you.
For the record, Matt Hammer, Landplex Engineering and Surveying, 60 Fletcher Street, Lowell, Mass. So this is a site plan, showing the existing fire station. As you can see, the existing fire station is surrounded completely with asphalt, and that's shown in gray. The lot is 5,346 square feet. Mammoth Road is here, and this is one entire access paved area which was utilized by the fire department previously. The proposal is to add in green space where there was pavement, so you're going to see a reduction in green space, or, I mean, a reduction in impervious surface, which is shown here. Landscaping in the back, a tree in the back, and landscaped area shown here. As Attorney Gary had pointed out during the ZBA proceedings, a shade tree was requested to be put in right here, which we agreed to. These are the parking spaces on the right-hand side. That provides access with a porous pavement walkway to the unit in the rear, which is on the ground level. This is a parking space in front of each of the existing garage bays, which will provide parking space within the garages, which provides access to a stairwell inside the building to the second and third floor for these two units accessing here. There's an additional area here as well, so it's not as if the car is tucked in tightly from the building to the roadway, so there's a extra area here for maneuverability for those vehicles backing out onto Mammoth Road. So this is an architectural plan, starting here on the ground level. Here are the parking spaces within the units with stairwells to get themselves up to the second floor of their units. The second floor, that's the stairwell coming up, so there's a full floor plan, front to back, for each of the two units, as well as on the third floor. So these are big units, 3,000 square feet for the, for units one and two. The ground-level unit is here, it's a smaller unit, which is 1,200 square feet, but has a nice access to the rear as well from that, from that unit. And those are the architectural plans. And that's my initial presentation.
Thanks, Matt. So, Mr. Chairman, we believe that we, this proposal meets the spirit of the Lowell Forward Plan. We are creating additional housing in the city. We are producing real estate, revenue to the city in terms of real estate taxes, and we are stabilizing this building for decades to come. We believe that we have demonstrated that we meet the criteria or exceed the criteria for issuance of the special permit, and we respectfully request approval this evening. But we're here to answer any questions, try to address any concerns that the board may have. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll throw it back to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody here tonight like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? I'll turn it over to the board members. Before I turn it over to them, Matt, I just have two questions on the plan, one being snow and one being trash. So two questions, yeah?
Sure for snow removal?
Yep.
All of these green areas here will be utilized for snow storage.
And which way you going to go with the trash? Are they going to be?
There'll be.
City pickup curbsides or?
I believe there'll be totes within these garages that they can bring out to the street.
So it'll be city curbside pickup?
Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
At this point, I'll turn it over to any of the board members. I just want to get those questions out of the way first.
Mr. Chairman, if I?
Mr. Fichette?
First of all, architecturally, it's a, it's a beautiful building, so it's nice to see that we can, we can save it. I am aware of other people looking at it with the thought of trying to get more units into the building. So I actually appreciate the fact that you're not looking to do more than three units. Therefore, you can provide the parking on the site. All the things you pointed out, you got Father Maguire Park right across the street. It is a business, neighborhood business zone, but it really is, it's a walkable neighborhood as well. So from that perspective, I, I think it, it fits in. As you noted, Counsel, the city's traffic engineer mentioned, I mean, it's not ideal with the parking in front of the, the structure. We had one where, a few months ago, somebody was trying to create it, that it didn't exist elsewhere in the neighborhood, but when you really look at that strip where that is right now with the other businesses, that really, actually, it fits with what's, with what's there. So it's not inconsistent with what's already there. And you, you are removing some of the impervious surface and putting greenery, some shrubbery, you've got the shade tree that you're, you're placing in the front, and I parked right there, there's plenty of room behind those vehicles, so you're not, you know, you're not, the, the cars are not impeding on the sidewalk that way.
Right.
You know, if somebody's going by. So I think you hit all the marks as far as, you know, trying to fit that in there. Again, I'm delighted to see you're not trying to get more units in there. I do know, boy, these projects get very expensive, so good luck to you, sir. But I, I, I'm pleased with the plan overall, so thank you.
Thank you.
Caleb, any questions or comments?
Yeah. Excuse me. I see some staff comments about stormwater, wastewater, and water departments having, you know, requiring a few things from you guys, and so can you, can you, I don't, I don't recall you, you addressed them, or can you?
No.
Reiterate?
Right. We, we don't have any pro, any concerns about those comments. We can meet, is there a storm? We'll let the professional answer that question.
Actually, I'd like to go to Mr. Linehan's comment about the trash as well. We just realized, we're going to put a, for this lower unit, we'll put a trash unit right here, so they can bring the totes out. So, so Caleb, I think it was not necessarily noticed at the beginning when they were reviewing that this is an entire porous walkway, and that this is now all green. So we'll be working through that with the stormwater team as well. And then if, if there's any additional drainage that might be requested, we actually have room for it.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I hear you.
We weren't too concerned about that.
How are the current roof runoff, like, goes to?
It goes pretty much right out to the street or right out to the rear.
I see.
Yeah.
And so whereas there, there, because it's all paved right now, you, you improve that situation?
We're improving that situation, yes.
Thank you for explanation. I, one more question, just out of curiosity. So what happened to the top part of the tower? Because I didn't notice there is a tower until I looked into the back.
Yeah, it needs a roof, and it will, the roof will be replaced.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Is there a ladder going up there? I'm just curious. You didn't saw, like, you know?
Fire pole coming up? No, there will not.
Okay. And?
But, but what's, what is there will remain in the, the roof portion that has, is now no longer there will be replaced.
I see. So I see that on the upper floor, you have like a room there, so, not, not on that top part, but on the third floor, you have a room on the, on the chute, I always suppose?
Yep, right here, third floor.
On the upper right of the third floor? Yep, there is. And so are they going to look straight up to the roof, or I'm just curious whether it will be there?
We don't have that full detail for them.
Okay.
But they would be looking up to some cathedral. It would, it'll probably be closed off.
Okay.
For heating purposes.
And Mr. Scaff can probably address that.
The third floor is just a little room. It's a, it's like a study, I suppose. And the per, part of the purpose of the third floor is that we need a platform to stand on to build a roof. So that's, that's the way we, I did it on Fourth Street, because there was nothing there. They used to dry the hoses, the fire hoses in that tower.
Yeah, to dry it, right? I was thinking.
So to build a platform so we could do the work.
Oh, I see. So the platform will become the roof, like, where you were?
No, 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 the platform will be below the roof, so we could build the roof above.
Ah, okay.
They have something to stand on.
I see. All right.
That's how I did it on Fourth Street.
So that will be quite an interesting space when it's all done.
Yeah.
Okay. Oh, thank you for entertaining my question. I'm all done.
Okay, thank you. Lucia, any questions or comments?
I'll just comment. I think repurposing this parcelant view more housing just makes sense, and it has such distinctive character. I love that you're keeping those elements and, you know, maintaining that local heritage as a fire hose, so that's it.
Thank you. Trevorson?
I'm all set. You guys are ready to answer all my questions. Congratulations. I love the project.
I just have a couple of questions. So obviously, with the fire department, you're going to have to sprinkle in the system, right? No problem with that, Counsel?
Yep.
Right? You have the sprinklet that says property will require a sprinklet, the fire department said?
Yeah, we'll comply with code.
And obviously, when I went there, you know, I parked in the same place, Jervy, right in front, and took the picture, and... I took the picture and you see the nice sign up there, 1891, built right into the cement. Is that staying?
No.
Oh, very good. Very good. I imagine that's the year it was built, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, you saw that, you're like, you know, it keeps the character by keeping that there. And a lot of times, we like these conversions, like to see somebody old character that blends in with the neighborhood. You know, it's pretty noticeable. People are going to know it's an old fire station. It's not like, you know, it's probably why they built that, but yeah. So I saw that, I thought, I mean, nice to keep that. Yeah, like I say, because the parking is good. I mean, the building right next to you has the same layout, but after backing it. I really like the fact that we're across the street from the park. We had a lengthy tree haring with, so we all walked outside just a few months ago. So we're all very familiar with the park. We walked the whole place back up and down. So it's nice to have that park across the street. You talk about usable, open space, you know, it's right across the street that... And now they're doing work on that park now. So when that comes out, it can be really nice. So that definitely enhances the project. If, you know, people like, they can, I mean, really close, close instead of down the street or something of that nature. So, yeah, I think it's a very good project. I'm in favor of the project, so.
So any board members have any further comments? If not, we have requested one vote for a special permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion with the following conditions to approve the special permit. Because it wasn't submitted in the plan to, subject to the placement of the shade tree at the front of the lot. Because again, it was not submitted in the plans that was before us this evening, although I know, you said the ZBA had requested that.
Yeah.
Also, to incorporate the conditions by the city's engineering department, of conditions one, two, three, four, and five, six, and seven. And I believe you obviously had no issues with, with those conditions. And it was relative to the remove and reset granite curb along the full frontage of the property. All utility trench work should be milled and paved in a single continuous patch, clearly indicate the limits of payment. So again, we just want to incorporate that into the approval also, that the applicant will comply and work with Stormwater and Maninvent Team as to any requirements that they would impose upon the, the development. Again, recognizing the fact that you're decreasing the impervious surface. And, I mean, you have to work with them anyways, but we certainly want to incorporate that into the approval.
Sure.
And I believe, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor for the special permit in favor with few conditions. Do we have a second?
Second, the motion.
Second by Caleb. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Any opposition? Hearing none? Motion carries. Five in favor. None against. Wish you well, good luck.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Okay, moving along on the agenda. Our next matter is a site plan review, which would be 239 East Merrimack Street. The Lowell Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear all interested persons relative to an application by Edna Delise to convert the existing three-unit residential property to a four-unit residential property. This subject property is located in the urban multifamily zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review, approval from the planning board per section 11.4 for the expansion of residential development with greater than three residential units. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. My name is Paul Campbell, chess engineering, the Lance of Air and Civil Engineer Record for the project. Record by office at 126 John Street in Lowell. And I'm here representing Ed and Eunice Ziegler, owners of the property. So this project is a conversion of a three-unit property to a four-unit property. I'm going to refer to how it existed prior to construction happening. There's, there's a history here that the building commissioner kind of laid out in their comments. But we approached this project when we were brought on board to show how the project, as it's built now, complies with the zoning. So just as a, to go over all the zoning requirements, the, the use itself is allowed by right. So four to six units in the UMF zone, per Article 12.1 dot D, is allowed by right. However, going from three units to four units requires site plan review by the planning board. So in reviewing the zoning dimensional requirements for the property, the property is a pre-existing nonconforming for lot area and building setbacks, which are not changing or have not changed as the project. So the building footprint has not changed at all. The building height has changed. So we measured the building height as it's been constructed, and it's still well within the 65 feet maximum building height in six stories. The building is 36 feet and four stories. So it complies with zoning. The, they're going to need relief from the landscape requirement per dwelling unit. Right now, pre-construction, there were 16,000 or so square feet per unit. Thousand square was, square feet per unit was required, and now we have 815 square feet per dwelling unit. Going through the zoning requirements for a site plan review, the major thing we found, discovered was off-street parking. So the existing building prior to any construction had three residential units, zero off-street parking. Due to its location near a city garage and the requirement that within 400 feet, off-street parking be provided by other properties, the applicant is now getting four leased spaces in the property right next door to provide off-street parking for all four units. So it's an improvement from existing conditions because before you had three units with no off-street parking, and now you have four with some off-street parking. I drive by this house every day. I'm at the bootmilled buildings and driving to 495. I pass this every day, and it's all traffic. And knowing now people can be parked off would be a great beneficial help. I can go, I, there were some comments provided by the town staff. We'll go through them. I'll come back to the building department comments. But first, just kind of moving to the engineering comments. So they talked about the parking provision. So the parking provision, if there's city parking within 1,500 feet of the entrance of the building, the planning board's allowed to reduce the parking requirement by 50%. So their comment is whether the measurement is along the actual pedestrian route or whether it's point-to-point as the bird flies. So section 6.1.6, it's 1,500 feet from the entrance of the use located to an off-street parking facility. That's point-to-point. Other uses, like dormitory, nonprofit, those are specifically measured along the traveled way. So I'm just reading, reading the plain text wording of the zoning. It's, it's point-to-point. And I've worked on other projects in city of Lowell, and I can point to other ones where that requirement has been interpreted that way. The leased parking spaces, yeah, they, they've provided a lease that expires at the end of the year. I, I won't speak for the applicant or the, the leaser, but it does seem like the leaser has, you know, agreement to like move forward with the, continuing the lease. So if that's a condition of approval, I don't, I don't see an issue there. And then fire service upgrade, that's a building code issue. So again, the use, again, is allowed. It's just whether the site plan was approved. So, and then in terms of wastewater comments, utility plans, so the existing buildings on this property are not changing. There's no change to the existing utilities. And there's frankly no room on the property to do any sort of site work at all. So there's, I've made the client aware to, if there's any plumbing or issues, that'll be resolved in a building code. But there's no wastewater utilities being constructed. So with that, I can answer any questions within my realm of zoning compliance and site, site plan. And Ed and Eunice Ziegler are here to discuss the project if you have any other questions, so. Thank you.
Anything further from the applicant?
Hi, good evening, everyone. So Eunice Ziegler...
Would you say your name and address, please, for the record?
Yep. Eunice Ziegler, representing for the 239 East Merrimack Street project here. So just to confirm what Paul had mentioned, with the parking lease, that is renewable every annually. So what you had before you, it does expire in December, and a new one will be, will take place starting January. It will be on an annual basis. We're happy to provide you with that on an annual basis if the board so chooses. This is a, a project that does comply with, you know, the city's intention to increase affordable housing within the city. The units itself, just for clarification, it's two detached buildings. So there is a two, it's a two-family being converted to a three-family and a detached accessory dwelling unit that's in the back. So it is not a four fam, it's not your standard four-family building, unit building. It is two separate buildings, just for clarification on, on that regard. This is an effort to ensure that there is housing available here within the city. We have, you know, been in communication with the, with the city on this project. There's a multiple inspections that have been done to the property. We note that there have been some comments that were received last week and intend to respond to all of those comments and comply with those comments to ensure that this project goes according to what the city would like to see, but also that we have good quality housing that individuals who are looking for a place to stay within the city are able to find within the city. So we're here to answer any questions that you may have relative to this project.
Thank you. Anybody else want to speak on behalf of the applicant before I turn it over to the public? No? Okay. At this point in time, anybody here this evening like to speak in favor of the project? Anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? Yes. Just got the microphone, state your name and address, please, ma'am.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Gail DeGeralamo, 15 Elmont Road, Lowell, Massachusetts. I'm currently the manager of 249 East Merrimack Street. That is the home that is directly next to 239. Numerically oddly enough, but we're used to it here being in Lowell. I'd just like to make a few comments. Number one, we all know it's, it's extremely busy street. As a matter of fact, a few of the neighbors have had their cars totaled more than once. Parking there, to say parking is horrendous, it's not even close to what we mean. It's extremely difficult. We cannot make deliveries or have deliveries made currently. It's my understanding that there are already four units on the property. There is the small, smaller building that Ms. Ziegler referred to, and then there is the larger one. The prior owner, excuse me, had actually, it was originally a two-family. The same family owned the two homes, 239 East Merrimack Street and the house right next to it, 249. And they were both two families originally. The only difference is there was a, what they used to call a carriage house behind 239, which now is a four-bedroom standalone home. We have hospital vehicles that have to enter and exit. We have private vehicles that are going into the hospital. It's an incredibly busy intersection, if you will, right in front of those two homes directly. We have the Immaculate School right there. The school buses line up when they deliver and pick up children. There are a number of children from that school also that walk. So at different times, they release the children so they can go home. We, we have also a concern of the number of bedrooms that we have. With all due respect, I realize that there's a two, two-car limit for, for each unit that's allocated. We have no guarantee that the service station that's leased, for the leased parking, will be along, will be a growing, a going concern. We have no idea, they may sell it, whatever. We can't tell what's going to happen in the future. And the people that live on that street will be stuck with having the extra bedrooms and extra units, even if this goes through, which is not, not a benefit, I don't think. That's no guarantee we're going to have that extra parking. I don't know if the place is at capacity. The service station is at capacity for the full number of units they can use. We don't know if they're going to be available in the, in the wintertime when we have snow. But that's, that's for the board to review that lease. And I understand it's, it's available to the board. At the time, when the building permit to raise the roof was for 239, it was specifically stated on there not to include another unit. However, another unit was actually put in there before it was all closed. It, the, excuse me, the building permit was closed out. It took a prolonged amount of time, just about, it was my understanding, almost a year before the, that building permit finally got closed out. And that's troublesome, too. I'm there just about every day at 249, the home next door to it. I took pictures as they did the construction. It was extremely difficult. We have construction vehicles coming to, to do the work on 239, and the traffic was just, just phenomenal because it was just so packed. I'd like the, the board to consider in particular the items where there were shortfalls for addressing this extra unit for 239. In fact, that the number of, we can't do anything about the frontage of a lot size. We can't make more land, et cetera. I get that. The problem is, we shouldn't be building more and more and more because the street itself just simply cannot handle it as it is. We only have room for 249 to have one car per unit. The next building going towards the opposite side of 239, I'm not sure what number exactly it is. There's only room for two cars there. So to add on and say, you know, these cars currently for 239, they're parked on Ash Street, they're parked on other streets. They have vans and everything. Maybe they're using the leased parking lots now, parking spaces now, I'm not sure. But there's a lot of them. So we have to be careful about that. And another thing, I'd be, I'm very concerned about setting a precedent. So with these, I'd like for the board to consider, as I'm sure they will, and deny the permits. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the board members.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may...
Yes, Mr. Fisher?
If we could go over the, the parking, so obviously, that's the...
That's the...
Right, that's the challenge. And it's your point, looking at this only one, it's with the dormitories, it specifically spells out that it's measured along a traveled way. In the section you're citing, it, it does not specifically say that. And so whether we infer it's as the eagle flies or as... So, whether we infer it's as the eagle flies or as I, but, but you're correct, you know, right? The dormitory specifically, we, we had a case on that and how you, how you measure it.
Right.
Relative to that, just entertaining the, the parking spaces at the, at the service station next door. Matter of fact, I know there was a chain along East Merrimack, so what, you know, I, so we, you know, we approved recently, it was a very congested area, and it was converting a retail unit into a residential, but, and we couldn't change the non-conformity of what was there, but that unit, as it turns out, across the street had, had two-deeded parking spaces to it. So, this is a little bit more of a, a challenge relative to that. So, there, what's the, what, what is the intended arrangement with the service station? Is it, is it specific spaces? Because, I mean, I go by that place often, too, and I looked at it for my day job to somebody who's looking to buy it sometime, it's packed, it can't fit any more cars on that lot. You really can't. So, what's the, I, I, I'm trying to visualize that because I'm familiar, I'm very familiar with the site.
Sure. So, I'm going to need some help with the applicant.
Yeah.
Talking about how the actual people using the units are going to park and get to their thing, but I just want to talk from a strict zoning perspective.
Right.
So, looking at the auto use next door and the residential use on our property combined, I don't have the site plan in front of me, apologies, but combined, I should come up to the site plan. The auto property, from what we can tell, they have about 26 parking spaces available on the property. Combined, if we're allowed the 50% reduction, which it sounds like we are, four parking spaces plus what the auto is required to have for their part zoning requirement, which is two spaces per bay. There's a total of 12 parking spaces required for the two use. Now, I know that zoning versus what practically is happening is two different things, but from the planning board's perspective, you're, you're approving a site plan per the zoning by law. So, there's 12 parking spaces required, there's 26 available on the.
Well, you, but you're not here for site plan for the garage, you're here for site plan for your unit. The reduction is on your lot, not the reduction, and that's a different use.
Yeah, right. So, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is that there's an abundance of parking, even if we weren't given the 50% reduction.
Right.
The two uses, there's 26 spaces available.
That's not, that lot isn't up here for site plan review.
Right.
If you're, you're talking, you're lecturing us on what's zoning and what you're doing.
Right.
That's not what's before us.
Right.
It's the lot next to it.
Okay.
And we can reduce the parking on that lot.
Right.
So, that's what we're working with right now.
Okay.
I just want to make that clear.
Got it. So, the zoning says that we can lease spaces within 400 feet. So, we've looked into the whole neighborhood to see what spaces were available. This one made the most logical sense since it was completely, like, directly adjacent to the property.
Sure.
I don't, looking at the lease, it doesn't look like they specify what exact parking spaces.
Right.
And I'll leave that maybe to Eunice to, to answer or talk about. But other available parking was, we tried to reach out to the hospital, see if they rent out parking spaces on monthly. We just weren't able to get in contact with anybody there.
Yeah.
There's also a church there that, outside of Sundays, they might not need the parking during the week when this is the most critical issue. But it's within, all those, all those areas were within 400 feet. So, just to respond to the comment, you know, future leases, future, you know, we can't predict what's going to happen in the future with this person and that person, but like, right now, they have a lease for, within 400 feet of their property, and they're trying to make the situation better, so.
Oh, I understand.
Yeah, so like, if this gets denied, there's no leased parking on, on the property, and those three units are parking wherever they're parking right now. And I, and I sympathize with this. I'm not, I'm not just a business owner, Lowell. I live at the, at the Exchange Street. I walk to work every day.
Yeah.
When I have to drive, I hate it, and when I have to go buy this, you know?
Right.
So, I, I get it, but, you know, as a resident adjacent to downtown, like, parking, for me, I utilize the, the city parking garages in both my, you know, my work and my residence. So, yeah, so we're, we're trying to improve the situation out there, how they're going to get from, yeah, there's a chain, you're, you're correct, there's a chain over here, there's a wall and, and a fence over there, so.
Right.
Yeah, but they'll be able to get from this auto to, to their, to their unit, so. I don't know if you have.
But I just, again, I want to keep it straight, right? The reduction of parking, the calculation isn't using that of the lot.
Right. Oh, yeah, yeah, and we're not asking for, like, there's no reduction on that, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but you're, you're trying to do the math, saying, well, reduce their parking by half as well.
No, 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 we don't have to reduce their parking. So, the requirement for the auto is two spaces per bay.
Right.
They have four bays.
Right.
So, they need eight parking spaces for their, to, to stay zoning compliant. They have 26. So, they have excessive parking from what's required in the zoning. So, you know, they might be.
From a practical sense, they're using.
For storage.
You walk by it, right?
Yeah, they, they use it for storage and everything like that, but, you know, like, I'm sure now with a lease and being paid to give people parking, they'll, they'll figure it out and make it work.
And, because right now, the residents are parking on the street or the?
Probably in the neighborhood, I can't, can't speak for that, but.
Yeah, that, that's, that is the challenge.
That is the challenge. And, and again, not to belittle what had happened with the building permit, but the use is by right. The site plan is, is a special.
Oh, yeah, no, I saw, the, the three units, I, I saw the language of that, and I saw the table of uses in three, it's, it's by right use, by the way. But that's more, the issuance of the permits are different. Whatever happened with that, I'm not quite sure what, what happened with that, but obviously, the, I think the building, the commissioner has to address that issue as far as.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a reason why we asked for inspections, because we want to make sure, you know, in the, in the city's master plan, matter of fact, we were all shocked in the census response, it was like 426 people responded that they didn't have adequate facilities in their units. Part of the reason, as you know, you pull a permit, is to make sure the work is done properly, right? And make sure it's safe, and we have safe and housing for, for the residents of the city. So, obviously, it's a serious issue. That's a whole, that's a whole other issue.
So, I just want to clarify again, just for the record, like.
Yep.
Ignoring the 50% reduction, it's eight units, eight spaces for this use, and even if we didn't reduce, there's eight spaces for that, 16 total, 26 are available, still in excess.
Which, which is, which is not on your site.
Right, you're right.
Just wanted to make that clear. It's not on your site, and it's a site that's being totally utilized, so I just, just want to make sure we're clear on that. Yeah, okay, geez, in the, the, the leases, how many units, how many spots were they looking to get leases for?
Right now, they have a lease, I understand it's a lease for four spaces.
Four spaces. Says here they got three until December 25.
Yeah, I, I noticed the site plan we have on file is different than that one.
Yeah, there, there was confusion on my end about how many units were in this. My world is outside the building, so I, I initially had thought that there were two total units and it was turning into three, but late in the process, we understood it's three units on the building that turned into four. Like I said, we weren't part of the project before construction happened, so the site plan, this was submitted, and it's four units total on the property and four leased spaces.
Well, the comment says you have three leased spaces. The board should note that there is leased one, oh, per, okay, so, so you're already using the fourth, even though you don't have it, as saying that you have it?
Yeah. Yeah, they have the, they've updated their lease.
So, they're, so they're saying, we already have the fourth unit even though we haven't asked the board for permission yet? Sounds like the building inspector's issues.
Yes.
They might as well do it for us and come in here later and tell us otherwise. That's what it sounds like to me.
Do I have a question, Dylan, is, just for clarification, because it raised, raised a good point, is under the parking requirements for the reduction of the spaces required for the dormitories, it specifically says along a traveled way, and for section five in the UMU, I'm sorry, section six, in the UMU and UMF districts, non-residential parking requirements, non-residential parking reduced by 50% in a public environment, entrance, residential parking requirements may be reduced as much as 50% if a publicly-owned off-street parking facility is located within 1,500 feet of the entrance to the use of the special permit of the, special permit of the planning board finds that said public parking will accommodate the parking demands of the proposed project. It does not say along a traveled way. How are you interpreting that then in DPD?
I would read that as, just as the crow flies, and then the planning board has the authority to determine whether that provides adequate parking based on how someone might walk. That would be how I would read it.
So, okay, you're interpreting it as the crow flies, but stating that the planning board can determine if that's adequate?
Yep, the, so the planning board can grant a special permit if, if you find that, that public parking will accommodate the parking demands. So, I, I could be wrong, you could get a legal opinion on that. I, I would read that as the planning board can make that determination.
Yeah, and if that's the case, they're before us for a site plan, not for a special permit.
That's correct.
And engineering interpret it otherwise.
So, well, for one thing, I guess I, I've got to reverse that. So, they're not before us for the reduced parking for a special permit?
Right.
So, that's not the proper application then for that?
Right, we only receive the site plan review application, nothing for a special permit for the reduced parking.
So, to, to, to comply with that section, we really should have been, you should be before us for a special permit as well?
Right, right.
Okay, well, that's.
Any other?
Oh, I want to clarify, so, but I'm reading here is like, but if we interpret the 15,000, 1,500 feet as, you know, as a crow fi, straight-line measurements, then do they need a special permit to reduce the parking requirement? Or is the zoning, I mean, it seems like what engineering's saying here is that the zoning provision allows a reduction, but that allows, doesn't require us to give a special permit this?
It, it allows it with the special permit from the planning board, I think would be the, the right way to word that.
So, we do need a special permit? I mean, unless they can give us eight spaces.
On site? On site? That'd be nice.
Yeah, or the applicant would need to get the relief from the zoning board for the parking.
Yeah, it sounds like we need us, well, the applicant would need a special permit.
If they request us to go that far.
The applicant is, does have an application before the zoning board.
They have to even consider the parking reduction provision.
Yeah, so it's saying, yeah, that's, we would determine, even if we determined it was less than, if we determine it's less than 1,500 feet, then we, we have the ability to reduce it, but that's, the ability to reduce it is through a special permit, not through a site plan, so.
Yeah, just to clarify, too, my applicant, my client here, they are willing to get whatever leased spaces are needed, so anywhere from four to eight. They obviously have to go back to the auto dealer and change the lease, but they are, they are open to providing whatever off-street parking you think is necessary. And, and again, there's 26 spaces, so there's plenty between the two uses. I know it's an odd site plan review because there's no site work being performed, but this is just the requirement of the zoning by law.
Yeah, well, it becomes the biggest, and we, you know, we've had the issues before with trying to address the parking, and that's, that's where we find ourselves, so.
Oh, yeah. I'm not, I'm not unsympathetic.
Um, oh, I don't know.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
All right, I think two things. I think number one for the leased parking, like, I know, maybe asking my fellow members, like, how, how do we treat leased parking as a requirement? I mean, as an annual renewal, is that reasonable? I mean, I know, like, if we approve, this units would be allowed, I mean, unless we have condition, but it would be really hard to enforce. Let's say if the parking was not provided, or the lease end, and then it's not like city can go and check every year.
And the lease can be terminated by either the tenant or the, or the person who holds the lease by the garage at any time for either one of themselves. Then it's gone. And the lease is gone, and they get the four units, and they have no parking. There's no way to expedite it. I mean, either way, you break a lease, I have a lease, I live at the apartment, then I move out, lease is broken. They have a lease now, it's only good to December. They could have got a lot further out before tonight's meeting, they didn't decide not to, so we just go, well, what's in front of us tonight? So, as far as they're concerned, they have a lease that expires in four months, two months. Well, I mean, I mean, I think the reduction is up to the board to decide, number one. Number two, whether it's a special permit or not, they didn't apply for a special permit, so if we can't grant it, we can't grant it. Engineering says they don't think it works. The leased parking says they only have three leased parkings. They're saying four because they have a legal unit when they want to use their legal unit for a parking spot, which hasn't been approved by anybody yet. The question is, they need eight spots, they have none on site, they have three that expire in two months, and they want us to just give them everything without any parking?
So, I'm trying to find it in the zoning.
I'm, we're speaking, sir.
Sorry.
I have a few other questions other than parking, but.
Okay, go ahead, Caleb.
If, if others have questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Caleb.
Can the applicant describe a little bit about when the ADU units is put in place? I just want to understand, like, how that, you know, what's the timing in between with the third floor expansion and all that?
Can you repeat your question?
So, it is, is mentioned that the ADU in the back is an ADU, correct?
It's a detached unit.
On the detached, so.
So, when, when the property was purchased, it was purchased as, it was purchased that, in, in that capacity, with the detached unit, and then the, and the back building and the front building was two units.
Was it an ADU?
It's a three-unit, a three-unit property.
I think that, okay, thank you, yeah, but, but maybe ask my fellow members, like, it's a multi-family building, and there's this unit in the back, is that an ADU?
No, those were, I mean, there was some, so I will tell you from my, my day job, that it's more common in Nashville of all things, but they're on the same lot.
They're on the same lot.
Yeah, so they were just two separate buildings on the same, so if you did an appraisal on that, you'd do it as a three-family.
Yep.
Right? So, that's how you would appraise it, is if they were attached.
I understand.
Either the same way.
So.
And so, so for, on the deed, if you look at it, it's technically the unit behind is, is addressed to 239 and a half, and then we're talking about 239, but it's all on the same lot.
On the same deed?
Yes.
Correct. So, now, we're looking at, okay, thank you, and then I want to transition. So, we're looking at the minimum lot size per dwelling unit? So, I mean, that, if you add one more unit to your main building, then essentially there's a five unit?
No, it's, it's going, it's changing it from three to four.
Three to four?
Yeah.
So, right now, it's two units inside the main building and, oh, I see.
Yes, changing it, adding a new.
Okay, so that's counting the one in the back?
Right.
Okay, thank you. So, well, that, that solves one issue. On another note, like, you know, engineering talked about it, too, about fire service, I mean, regarding, I mean, and fire department comments, too, that conversion to a four-family, where we need to install a fire alarm and sprinkler system, so are you okay with those requirements?
Uh, definitely okay with that. It's something we want to talk more with fire department about, because it is not your typical four-family building. It's a three-family and then a detached unit in the back. So, we're trying to get clarification as to whether that regulation is for a four fam, your standard four-family, and whether it actually applies to our project. That's the, that's the clarification we're trying to get. We don't think that it does, typically for a three-family unit that, that we've seen. We haven't seen sprinkler systems included, but that's just a clarification we want to, you know, get from them.
Okay, thank you. And a note, I think this board take the fire department comments seriously, so I, I think if they do require it, I, I don't see any other way out.
Yes, for sure.
But I understand you can work it out with them. And, uh, moving on to other notes, wastewater have comments about, um, that you need to work with them? Otherwise, they would deny your, uh, application, uh, I mean, due to some missing documents for now, so would you be able to address that?
Yes, we'll be able to address that. We know that they had mentioned a utility plan as well, um, so we definitely...
A wastewater, yes, wastewater. Um, the stonewall, if anything to say? I don't know. There's no site work technically, but they have no comments right now.
Yeah.
Okay. So, thank you for the explanation. I think that that comes back to parking for now, I mean, as, as a concern.
And we're willing to address all the, all the comments. We did receive the comments mid-last week, and haven't had a chance to, you know, put new plans and things together to address them, but, um, we're willing to, to do that with regard to the wastewater and with regard to the, the fire department.
I see. Um, one more question. How is trash dealt with right now, and, uh, and would that be a problem when you add one more unit to the...
I'm sorry, with the sirens, it was tough to...
Oh, no worry, we'll wait, let it pass. So I want to ask, how is trash handled right now, and if you add one more unit, would that be any concern?
So we have four trash barrels right now at the, that property.
With city service, curbside?
City service, curbside, yes.
I see. Um, okay. I'll, I'll see if other, uh, members have any comments. Thank you.
Lucia, any questions, comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you tell me how many bedrooms in total? I think we just see the third floor on the, the site plan that was submitted. How many bedrooms do you, all of the buildings have?
In all the buildings? Um, sorry, I haven't come up.
Three bedrooms and, uh, another three bedrooms. The first, the first one is three bedrooms as well.
She's asking how many building, how many bedrooms in the whole building? The front building, the one you got in the back, everything you have, total bedroom?
Four, um, I'd say...
So four plus... And you're adding three?
Ten.
Ten.
So...
Ten, ten bedrooms.
And you're proposing four parking spots for ten bedrooms? Okay. Um, I, I have to say, I have concerns. I have concerns about the parking. It's a heavily congested area. Um, I just, and also, what, you framed it as affordable housing. Can you tell me how you intend to make it affordable?
So currently is, it currently is affordable, so, um, by that, we mean that it's not your typical market, market rate that we're charging for the units. Um, market rate right now for a three-bedroom can be anywhere from three to four thousand dollars. Um, the current rent that is charged is twenty-four to twenty-five hundred. So that's fairly affordable for, you know, families who are looking to...
Twenty-three.
Okay, and one fam, one family is paying twenty-eight in the back. That's the bigger unit. But, um, and that's the, the one that has four bedrooms. But for a three-bedroom, it's very affordable, so we're looking to, not to, you know, make this out of reach for a family that's looking to live within the city. We want to make sure that we have something that's affordable, that's accessible for a family.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a second? Any questions?
I'm all set.
Actually, sorry.
Go ahead, Caleb.
So just want to, a question for staff. So, I mean, if, I know, um, the, the site plan now have eight, uh, eight fifteen square feet per dwelling unit, so would they require a variance from zoning?
Can you repeat that?
Oh, they, they would have less than the, um, square feet per dwelling unit than the required thousand square feet per dwelling unit. Would that require zoning variance?
Yes, that, if, if they didn't meet that requirement, that would need to go before the zoning board. Um, they do have a hearing scheduled before that.
Okay.
Yep.
I see. Good then, okay.
Yep, we're scheduled for zoning on the sixteenth.
On the sixteenth, okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I?
Sure.
Dylan, we're gonna, we're grilling you here. Um, just looking at the parking requirements again, on page fifty-two, um, I mean, and it's, uh, Section six point one point six. The final paragraph of that section, it says, "All privately owned off-street parking facilities shall be under the same ownership or be leased to the same ownership as the building or buildings which they serve. Where a certificate of occupancy has been issued conditional to the maintenance of off-street parking facilities, such certificate of occupancy shall lapse in the event of the sale or conveyance of the land used for such parking facilities for the required parking, or if said land is otherwise no longer available for such use." Um, I guess what is, this is seeming to indicate that the, the space, the, the parking space that you're leasing has to be all part of the same ownership of the project? I'm, I'm not understanding that, to be honest with you. In the last sentence is completely, I didn't even read that. Parking space is satisfying these requirements need not to be in the city. I don't know what that means.
I think the second part is just for properties that may be near a border of another town. The last part, I think, is just for property...
Okay, all right, okay.
For this...
Yeah, absolutely.
May I provide a comment about the ownership? I, I found something in the zoning that I think, um, clarifies this. So I think you're correct in that it's Section six point one point five, subsection four. So two or more uses may meet their parking requirements by a shared common parking area, provided that the shared spaces are held in common ownership, with all uses being served through easements or fee title, and that all spaces are located within four hundred feet of the units they serve. So I, I would read that as, um, uh, maybe as a condition of approval, that the applicant would have to be deeded those spaces in, in a more formal, uh, deed process versus, uh, just a standard lease.
Regular lease, right.
Yeah, I believe you're correct, but I would, I would ask for that to be a, a condition of, of approval and, you know, obviously signed off before occupancy is issued.
Yeah, and it's, it's highly unusually, usual request. We usually don't get this, to be honest with you.
Oh, I know, I know.
I can appreciate you trying to solve it in a simplistic way, but...
Yeah.
...is, we're to it.
Yes, I agree.
Dylan, your thoughts on, uh...
I don't know the exact definition. You'd probably have to get a lot of opinion on that, but, um, for the second part, where the certificate of occupancy would lapse, I would presume that would mean at the time they lose access to those spaces, they no longer have approval for that use.
Hmm. And then the, and then the section in, in, is it Paul Cape?
Paula Campbell, yep.
Yeah. Cited two is, is under six point one point five, subsection four, um, as well, that it has to be more formalized. And then it would require a special permit. I, I, truthfully, I don't see how we can vote on the site plan without, a, a special permit needs to go with this. New, new posting needs to happen, and if that's going to be the, um, and then, and then if you're going to provide something, it has to meet the criteria of, of that as well. It has to be more formalized. I, I, I'll wait to hear what my colleagues have to say, but that's, that's how I see all of this in front of us right now.
Sure.
Um, well, appreciate the clarification. I think deeded space will be wonderful, but you may have a harder time finding those. Um, and the process of getting things deeded will, will take longer, so, I mean, uh, so that's something to expect. I think, secondly, notwithstanding, uh, yeah, I mean, according to zoning, if you, if, if the applicant lose those space, then none of the unit can be occupied. They pull your building occupancy, right? Whereas right now, I mean, you don't need that. I mean, I think that's something to, to be aware of.
Well, my concerns are the same as Lucia's, the parking. They want to put in, um, basically four units. Building inspector tells us they already put in a third illegal unit. Um, they don't have any parking on the site. Technically, they're supposed to have up to eight spaces, two per unit, which they don't have on-street parking. They do have a lease that expires in two months. We have no idea if that lease is going to be, be even forwarded or not. Um, if they were concerned about that, they could have brought a lease agreement with us tonight. If it indicated that we needed a special permit, they didn't apply for a special permit. We can't give them a special permit. Um, the engineering department, they've come out and talked about the parking reduction provision. They talked about how they feel that the fifteen feet is required. They also talked about the lease parking, how that expires in the other December. They talked about the, um, the fire department says they, they will have to require, um, the alarm system. Um, they can talk to them all they want, but the comments we have says they will have to require it. So I think it's a very, very congested neighborhood, as indicated. You have the hospital, the school, the church, the auditorium. I drive by there regularly. Matter of fact, I was driving by there tonight to come down here, here. Um, they have over ten bedrooms in the unit, and no off-street parking. So for several reasons, as indicated, that's indicated by the, um, engineering department, um, and, um, the, the fact that they have not even one parking space on-site, and they say they have a lease that expires in two months. So that's not satisfactory to me. That could go by the waybuck, by the wayside, and they'll have no parking whatsoever. Um, I think they should have more parking than they have there now, and to go from, as the building inspector says, an illegal three, and go and give them another four, because they, I don't see the parking, and because of the, um, Section six point one parking requirement, um, I'll make a motion to deny the application for the lack of parking, as indicated by, as well, and the city engineer's comments, and as well as everything we discussed tonight regarding six point one. Uh, we've discussed it in six point one, six point four. It's all states, basically, what you need for the parking, and they don't have it. So I'll make a motion to deny for those reasons.
Chairman, um, now, would, would it be possible to give them time to submit a special permit application?
No, I wouldn't vote for that, no. We don't tell them what to do, how to come back. If we're telling them what to do and what to come back, we both want the projects that come before us. We don't tell them how to build them, how to do it. They have gent, people here who know how to read the code as well as we do. We have staff comments who read them as well. Um, we only act what's in front of us. We don't tell them to come back and change this, change that. Then they'll come back and say, whoa, you told us to do this. I'm not going to tell them to do anything. I'm just telling them to comply with the parking. I think that's the main issue that's in front of us, and I don't think that it's satisfactory to the board or to the city comments that we received that the parking's required. So I stand by my motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
A motion, we have a motion on the floor, and, and second? Um, all in favor to deny?
I...
Discussion, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, discussion, Mr. Chairman. Um, oh, God. I'm just trying to think what...
How about if you talk to building commissioner, see if he can figure ways out, because I remember, right next to that property, Nelson Property, he put a bunch of apartments right back there behind it on, uh, forgot the name of the street, they kind of cornered down the street, and then, uh, he uses the parking for the next-door neighbor.
Yeah, I guess, I guess what I'm troubled with is, is, well, we got, I guess we got multiple things going on here. We've got comments about interpretation of the fifteen hundred feet. I'm reading the zoning ordinance. I probably want the law department to give me a clarification on that. Um, because then if it's beyond, by definition, if it's beyond the fifteen hundred feet, then they don't even have the option to reduce it by fifty percent. The engineering department has made a comment, but that's not a legal interpretation of what's written here in the zoning ordinance. Um, so I really would want a clarification on that, or whether or not that's the truly, whether that's even an option, or whether they're outside of that. However, having said that, we can't solve that because they didn't apply for a special permit, so we don't have that option to satisfy that this evening.
And on the other part, it says, even if, if you go in the fifteen hundred feet, this is satisfied the planning board. And I don't think they put a case forward to satisfy, at least not me. I mean, and like I say, it's very congested. I mean, there's no doubt about it. You, you look from side yard to side yard, um, it's a motion on the floor. We got a second. If you want, I can poll the other board members, whichever you like to do.
Can I provide a point of clarification?
Nope, time's up. We're voting.
Dylan, do you, do you have a thought, Dylan?
No.
Oh, okay.
The requirement was...
So the motion, deny, what I'll do is I'll, I'll, uh, poll the board members. So I made the motion. Cecilia will second it. So, um, Caleb, what's your vote?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Ooh.
Mr. Kozosa?
I'm all set. Stain.
You abstain?
Second.
You abstain, okay. Mr. Vichette?
Oh, we put in a tough position here. Um... Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I would have looked for further clarification. Um, I don't think we have what we need in front of us here this evening to make any approval, that's for sure, and certainly, uh, we don't have a complete submission. I believe there was, oh, some material's missing, so, um... I really would want, see, the thing is, is if I want additional information, I don't want to imply that that's an approval, all right? So that's, so now you're thinking, you know, now it's posting all over again for a special permit, site plan, and it's not, doesn't mean it's actually going to satisfy what we're looking for. That's, that's, that's the challenge there. So, uh, having said that, my, my vote would have been to continue it, so I would not, I, I would vote in the, I guess, not to deny it, but I would have been looking to continue it. So I guess, Mr. Chairman, I would not vote to deny it.
Okay, so the motion for den, denial fails. Do we have another motion?
Um, can we give the applicant a chance to clarify, and if they want to request anything?
To get more clarification and see if it's possible.
I would, I would love to request a continuance.
So, um, I will put in a motion to approve a continuance to a time where I think staff...
Well, so here's, here's the, I guess where I get stuck with the continuance, though. It does require, I mean, we've got to get clarification, there's got to be clarification from the law department on that fifteen hundred feet. And whether... and whether or not it even is eligible for a site plan, a special permit. So that, that needs to happen. I would strongly encourage you to withdraw this without prejudice. That's what I would encourage you to do. And do a little bit more homework on this and see if that's something that, I mean, we need to get clarification from the law department on that 1,500 feet. Because if, how, they come down, they come down like the engineering department or planning department, but I want clarification on that. And then it has, you know, they have to come up with deeded parking spaces. Or, I mean, it has to be something more solid and see if it's something that even works. I mean, at the end of the day, there's a chance to perhaps improve the situation if you can get deeded parking spots, actually deeded spots. Because right now, you've got nothing, right? You've absolutely got nothing. So I would encourage you to withdraw it without prejudice. I don't know how my colleagues feel about that. It still has to take, it still has to get a vote, so.
On your advice, we take that advice to withdraw it without prejudice. And we seek your guidance as to the best route forward to do so.
Well, I, again, I don't want to fall into the trap as the chairman said. Not telling you, and I don't want to imply that that would be approved, right?
We understand.
But I think there's some technical things that we don't have answers to tonight. And so I hate to make a decision on the fact that we don't really have that clarified here before us. So I think you would have to do some homework, work with DPD on that. I would, specifically, I would want clarification before it would ever come back to us as to the application of that 1,500-foot requirement. That's first and foremost. I want to be sure how we're acting on that. And then what is required as far as, if it's a special permit in the site plan, then that has to be what we're looking at, so.
And again, for the 1,500, I think it comes back to the discretion of the planning board. If we're capable with it being within the 1,500, even if it's in the 15, we still don't have to give it.
Right, correct. And it'll be, what would be the remedy that you're coming up with? You have deeded spots?
So if they say they want this, and we say, well, we still don't think it's that the planning board can't. Doesn't mean if they are within the 15, we have to give it to them. I mean, if they have things that are lacking, it's not our job to cure it for them.
Correct.
We vote on what's in front of us. Either they have this stuff or they don't. Like I say, under 6.1, they don't have it. You know, I mean, the deeds that they have expire in two months.
Oh, yeah, no.
Well, we might get one in the future. We might win the lottery in the future.
Correct.
Okay, I mean, what's in front of us? What do they present? We sit here as fact finders, we decide what's best. My opinion, they don't meet the parking requirement.
Once they did expire, so they don't even have park for the current unit.
They have none, no parking, zero. No guarantee they're going to get them. Plus, you know, he's trying to tell us what they have in the parking lot. I mean, you see trucks coming and going in there all the time, big trucks. I know it very well. And, you know, he's trying to explain, well, he has plenty of parking. Like you said, Jerry, it doesn't matter what that garage has. I mean, it's a congested site. They didn't, satisfactory, if they have material that's missing, we can deny a site plan for material that is missing.
Right, right.
And it's our job to use our experience to decide how we interpret the zoning code. And how I interpret it, they don't have the parking. It's very simple to me. If they should have had a special permit, that was up to them, not us. Went out here to tell them what they got. You put your case forward, we either vote up or down. For all them concerned, they don't meet the requirement of 6.1. I think they almost stay it themselves. They told us they don't. So what are we going to do? Okay, we don't have the parking, but give it to us anyways. When have we ever done that?
Oh, yeah, I'm not talking about an approval here this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I get it, but I'm saying, they stated their case, and I think it's insufficient for an approval. Like I said, I made my motion, so, and I stand by it. Well, I can figure out the other motions, and you know where Lucia and I stand.
I think another thing is getting caught surprised by a different plan, and I think there's inconsistent information regarding actually what counts as what unit. I think I have hesitation about what, whether the department, the city department understand. I mean, it seems like you need clarification with fire department. So, I mean, I don't even know if fire departments know which units they are looking at. So I think that ultimately have to be cleared out as well with every department. I think maybe it will help with staff about, hey, this is a, what is existing, which might be two units in the main building and then one on the, on the unit in the back, and then what are you going to propose? I think that need to be clears up at the very least.
But I mean, when you look at the building apartment, tells us they have an illegal third unit. I mean, talking about how many units, and now we're telling them we got an illegal third.
Fourth one, then, right?
You know what I mean? So now we're going to the fourth one? And they said, yeah, we already built it already, but now we're coming in here asking for forgiveness?
So I think.
So now we're going to give them what they wanted because they already went ahead and did it. So what the heck are we doing here? Ask for forgiveness later? Good luck to you, okay? They've had issues here with the building apartment for a long period of time. They ask them certain things to do, they don't do it. Then they come in and say, oh, well, now we want parking, but we don't have any. But give it to us anyway. They either come in with the right plan or they don't. They have inconsistency in the site plan here, the site plan there. They tell us they don't meet 6.1. And we're supposed to say, well, go do this, and maybe do this, and maybe we'll think about it later? I've already thought about it. You got my decision, but, I mean, you know, I mean, we rely on the engineer department, we rely on all the city staff all the time. I mean, and I don't think there's an issue with the fire department. Conversion to a four-family will require installation of a fire alarm.
And sprinklers.
Yep, period. Didn't say how many units. It's very simple. It goes by what their application says. It's what they tell them. They interpret what they tell the fire department. They read what they're putting in the audit when they give it to them.
Okay.
The fire department will say, yeah, they told us this is what they want to do. Code says they have to do it. Engineering says they have to do it. And they said, well, we'll consider it.
So, Mr. Bichette, I think we have a failed motion to deny. And then we have a request from the applicant to withdraw. We have, it's up to the board to decide what motion we want to make.
Yep, so it's up to you three to come up with a motion. We've already made that. Lucia and I already voted, and you, and we haven't got a third to beat the majority vote.
And you're requesting a withdrawal without prejudice? And you're just going to have to go back to the drawing board? If there's anything that could be done? You may determine that nothing that could be done, just to make that clear, all right? But with that, I would make a motion to allow the applicant to withdraw the application without prejudice.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? No. Lucia, against? Drobinson?
All right, no.
No. So therefore, the motion fails to withdraw.
So.
Lucia, myself, and Drobinson voting against it, Mr. Bichette, and Caleb voting for the motion to withdraw.
So, Chair, what happens? You can.
Well, we keep going till we get a vote.
And may we request a continuance, then?
Nope. You can't do a continuance, we've already, too late.
Mr. Chairman, I guess you've, to your point, you've made the case that they, under the strict criteria of looking at the application and looking at what's been presented before us, we're not in a position where we can approve. So if we're not in a position to approve and we would not continue it, I guess we would look at the denial of the application, so.
Okay, so I'll go back and make a motion to deny. Do we have a second? Second by Lucia. All in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
All right. Sorry, the applicant is denied. A lack of parking under section 6.1 and other reasons as stated by the board members, insufficiency. The site plan was inconsistent, the materials were inconsistent, as well as comments made by the fire department, the building department, and the engineering department. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, moving along. So we have this matter here on the pre-application for 236 Broadway Street. That got on the agenda by myself. What happened was, if you remember, at the last meeting, the applicant wasn't here. I made a motion to continue it to the November 3rd date. I believe, I look, it's up in the minutes tonight. Lucia was the one who seconded it. After that, planning staff indicated they had a miscommunication where they put it on the agenda two places. One was October 3rd, the other on the 20th. And they indicated that they're going to put it off on the 20th. And I said, well, planning staff can't put it off on the 20th because the planning board voted to continue it to the 3rd. So therefore, the matter would have to come back before the planning board. And most of them would have to be made to reconsider if need be. So I mentioned to planning staff, put it on the agenda, and we'll see where we go. After speaking with staff, and they reached out to the applicant and said, basically, if you still want to go forward for October 20th, tonight, the board could have the right to reconsider the vote and continue it to that date maybe. Or they could leave it on to the 3rd. And I indicated to them to let them know that the 20th is a heavy agenda and the 3rd is a lighter agenda. The applicant at that point in time indicated they will remain, they request to remain on for the November 3rd meeting night. So that matter stands to November 3rd. We don't need a vote since it's, but in the long run, as I requested for clarification from staff. Because when they said they were going to put it on, I'm like, well, technically, you can't because the board had voted. If we hadn't have voted, they could have. So it worked out in the long run, so. And now, moving along, we have the election of officers. So the first election would be for a chairperson. And then we have a vice chair. And I usually, I know we usually do NEMCOG and historic board, but I know those terms usually come up on different expiration dates. Anyways, we vote them in tonight, and if they need extension, we do so during the course of the year. So we'll stick to what we usually do, and we'll start off with a vote for election of office, vote for the chairperson.
Mr. Chairman, I would like a motion to recommend you as the chair of the planning board, Mr. Chairman.
I second the motion.
Motion being second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate it. For vice chair, I'll make a motion to recommend Mr. Bichette as vice chair.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, hearing none. Motion's approved for Mr. Bichette.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Then we usually fill a NEMCOG spot. And since Mr. Bichette is being recognized, how can we not turn down the vote for Mr. Bichette? So I'll make a motion that we appoint Mr. Bichette since he's doing an outstanding job at NEMCOG. Be a representative to NEMCOG. We have a second for nomination for Mr. Bichette.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any opposition, that motion carries. And then for the historic board, I'll make a motion that we appoint Lucia since she's been on there and doing a great job. I make that motion for Lucia.
I second the motion.
Motion being second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Do we have any comments from any board members?
Mr. Chairman, I just want, everybody is welcome. The NEMCOG annual meeting is October 15th, begins at 5:30 to 8:30 p.m. It's at the Chumsford Center for the Arts. That's 1A North Road in Chumsford.
Is the address in that 1A?
1A North Road, Chumsford, Mass.
1A North Road, okay, yeah.
The old town hall.
Oh, yeah.
Chumsford Old Town Hall. It's near the center. And the, actually, from 545 to 645 is going to be networking, and there's going to be desserts. But it really is going to be, I think it's going to be a nice event. And it's other planning board members from other towns. It's elected officials. And the keynote speaker is Ed Augustus, who's the Secretary of Housing, Massachusetts Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And I think it's going to be a great event. This is the first, first time NEMCOG recognizes some individuals. And as you noted, I am getting recognized. I'd love it if members could be there. I am, I am, I am working hard. I take very seriously what I do on NEMCOG. I have served on just about every major committee. It's been a big, it's been a very transitional time with Beverly Woods retiring and Jay Donovan, who was the executive director and the director, retired at the same time during COVID. So it was a very critical juncture of that organization and search for a new, where there was nobody within the organization really to take that role. And we, you know, had put together a search committee. And in essence, we've actually turned over pretty much the workforce over there. I'm on the personnel committee. I've interviewed just everybody that's on there. Been on this personnel committee, I think, for about 14, 15 years. And so a lot happened. And I'm excited. I think it's positioned to really serve the nine communities that are members of NEMCOG. And, you know, look forward to the work in the future. And at some point, there'll be, have to be another member from this board serving on there. It's going to make 18 years next year for me as a representative to NEMCOG, so.
So you see the layout, so you have that networking and I drove from 545 to 645. Does it say when they're doing the awards or?
Yeah, 645 to 830 is the, it'll be welcome, there'll be a kind of a welcoming year in review. And then the keynote speaker would be the secretary, and then the.
So what's the keynote speaker?
I.
Does it say on the agenda?
What time?
Yeah, I'm just trying to.
I suspect that the year in review, although there was a lot to take in, it starts at 645. I would imagine by 715, the keynote speaker will be speaking, 7, 715.
And then after that, they do the awards?
The awards, yes.
Okay, then, okay. Anything further?
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have anything over there? Say aye for them. One thing I'd like to say is, we haven't had a chance praise Dylan to be in our new senior planner. Congratulations, Dylan.
Congrats.
So, well, thank you. Wish you well. You know, you're getting yourself into with us already. You know, with all the questions that Jerry asked you.
He's probably saying, I wish you had called me up.
Well, but we wish you well and congratulations, okay? Saying that, no further notice, we entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. Motion's made, and second by Lucia.